Welcome everyone to the Town Manliness Planning Board. Today's calendar, November 28th. First thing I'd like to do is review the minutes of our meeting, the rest of that November 14th. Second by Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Secondly, we have the minutes of a special meeting conducted on November the 18th. Motion by Anne.
Oh, second.
Second by Richard. All in favor? Any opposed? The minutes are approved, we're both dates, and written. The first regular item on the agenda is an application by A and E and S and Y Center. This is scheduled this evening for a public hearing. Is there any site plan? This is a med spa behind the resort lifestyles unit. It's all on one tax map number, 086-1-389. Is there anybody here on behalf of the applicant who would like to say something, just to fill in? People who are here and what it is that you are doing.
Wonder man.
Yes. We've heard from you in some detail before, but just, I guess, what would you like me to? Go through. Start all over. The short version.
Good evening, I just brought out, should never all consulting the other. So site engineers various projects located at the northeast corner of Center Drive and April Drive. The town. It's a. Thirty-nine thousand plus square foot building. That'll have. Part of it will have the two levels, one of the. As you can see here, just from the parking lot or whatever, and then there's a. Kind of a lockout type basement as you come up up the center drive and then. Last really portion will just be one floor, there's no basement to that portion of it. Proposed uses include medical uses for. I might probably go through.
There are 18 different services that we provide, we do a lot of laser service procedures such as plate repair. Tattoo, removal, sun spot removal, anything related to lasers. We also do projections of the whole action during your life. We do some cool stuff. You know, we can see some people there, people force injury, occupational injuries. We can bring some private services, traditional services. And that's true, also, I've been taking space again in the more basic, a little more minor surgery procedures that are not paid by the charter.
Short version? At this point, we have not declared ourselves to be lead agency. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Anne, second by Richard, to declare the paying more lead agency, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You lead us to seeker, we want to do a preliminary seeker determination. That's fine.
Okay, this is with the questions to be answered. No or small impact may occur, moderate to large impact may occur. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
Yeah.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? You know, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics, the coffee establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed actual result in an adverse pain from the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit piping or walkway? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supply or public or private wastewater utilities? You know, the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological or many good sources? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion flooding or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Having all of those questions being answered, small to no impact, the chairman entertained a negative secret declaration.
And I would entertain a motion for a negative declaration, Valerie. And I already used that, you know, I said, I had. I asked one thing.
I do, but I have not reviewed it yet, I've been contacting the project myself. So we don't know. Yeah. What our findings are for the. Knowing the site, the other properties that we've done around there.
Yep.
I can set that.
Yeah, I'm confident in it.
Okay.
We can, we give controls for that.
Any, anything we do would be subject to engineering approval?
And that was part of the whole thing, right?
I'll make a motion for negative secret declaration, subject to engineering.
Stand, I need a second, Ed, sir. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, did we properly publish notification of the public hearing today?
Make a motion with reading.
We have a motion pending to waive the reading, second by Judy.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, reading is waived. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion by Valerie, second by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
We now have an open public hearing for anyone who wants to speak regarding this application by A and E, S and Y Center. See anybody online?
Go ahead.
Motion made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is hereby closed. My recollection is. You maintain the variance relative to what you are setback. You maintain the variance relative to. But I think the loading dock still requires variance.
Correct, so we had applied at the same time for the loading area. But in discussions that night with the ZBA was decided that we needed to go through kind of the planning process to figure out where that variance would be. And then we should go back to them, the ZBA to get the variance for the dumpster loading area. Because they didn't want to go through it and have us come back to the ZBA if they were to get through the planning process.
Okay, alright, so it sounds like you're gonna go back as soon as you need to go back.
Correct.
From an engineering point of view, I'm still missing anything.
Alright, next week, the other day, there was a lighting plan that Ryan's still working on it.
Well, we submitted a lighting plan in September submission. And I can bring up just kind of what it looks like. Do you want, because I kind of went through your letter.
Okay. But it wasn't in the current segment?
Correct, yeah, I apologize for that, it was directly from our lighting consultant and I forgot to slip that into the. Oh, sensitive thing, it slipped that, but.
Were these variances based on neighborhood shopping?
Yes. We had already gotten this own change. From the town to the, that's, that's. Going to the neighborhood shopping is what created the reason to go to the.
I would, I would say we shouldn't receive any documents, the way that our meeting for your review, doesn't make sense.
Well. So, this is just kind of, so this is the lighting plan that was in the September something. And this is kind of a graphical representation of what that looks like showing them, you're not even paying like.
Which is still leaving a variance to the loading dock, that's kind of understanding here.
Correct. Yeah, didn't want to give us that variance until we've gone through the planning process. With this board, make sure that the location of the loading dock is going to be okay. So I kind of.
Catch, yeah, I get it. This is what I'd like to do. I'd like to postpone this. I'd like you to go to the ZBA now, relative to the loading dock variance. And finish up with Doug, relative to the lighting, make sure that engineering here is satisfied with what you've got. Doug, any other issues up and outstanding?
And I'm sure Ryan can address, I'm waiting, I'm sure he can address the SWF, the loading dock. I don't know how you folks left it with the sidewalk and ownership, the sidewalk, he's currently showing it on there. And there, the neighborhood shopping, there's a requirement for landscape buffer, there is the animal size. They do have a landscaping plan with an awful lot of landscaping, that's all that needs. A lot of you folks, I don't know exactly what that means, they absolutely need buffer on all sides, but there is a pretty detailed landscaping plan and it's a neat data.
We have an agreement maintains that sidewalk.
I believe last time we spoke that the applicant was gonna maintain it.
Yeah, because it's on our property. It's on their property, right?
Yes, that's, yeah, but is there some agreement with the town that they would do that? Does anybody know? Well, do you want to ask? It's on their property, not together agreement, but they're responsible to do anything, yes, there is.
And what, and what?
I mean, any of the sidewalk, the sidewalk, maintaining every parent, it's still following it, so.
I'm not sure if the town could use that, so, I'm not sure what the town code is, some maintenance of site, but I think it's on.
It's not in the district, right, it's on person, it's on private property.
Yes, on private property. Ineasement to allow the public to pass over it, that's why, that doesn't. There's no maintenance to the town.
I understand that, but is there maintenance to the property? Is there?
In, in a way that there's maintenance to the property or there's maintenance to the sidewalk for the building. That's, that's all I can say, there's nothing that, I do not believe there's anything in the easement language that requires. Maintenance.
You say easement, easement to who, to what, there is no.
Yes, there is.
To who?
The sidewalk, there is, to the town. The east, there is a dedicated easement existing. Where the sidewalk, well, right now the stone path is, that's going to become a concrete sidewalk and short. That is within an existing.
Do you have this written document? The maintenance should be.
Might take a while, that's going back to the office.
Well, we can, and we'll try to loosen, we can, you know, documents as well.
That's an important document, yeah. Okay, thanks.
So if you went back to the zoning work deals relative to the variance. Worked with engineering relative to finalizing the SWF, the lighting, things of that nature and worked with legal relative to. Or we could simply incorporate it in a final decision that this would be maintained, that the sidewalk will be maintained by anyone in property. I guess the condition of the.
Something different.
This was just on the panel. We have what was agreed to, the club thing, that's gonna be it, that all, taking a concrete side, that's just.
Well, if you have the document, otherwise then it can, it would be a condition, share things up for this approval.
Financial conditions, very, and they have been, it's possible to even get a. Conditional, you know, or pumping on a site plan. Thing, you know, just, he needs to be able to bank, you know, because financing rates are up and down. Is there anything we can do as far as so him to go to bank?
We've, we've never been able to give a temporary conditional. We won't, no.
Well, I just, like, I know on my other project that was approved, you know, it was continued upon me removing the. Bimisence, because you didn't want to approve a site plan with bimisence, it, you could make this conditional approval, I removed. The dumpster enclosure from this plan. So you can, and that. We come back for a site plan then.
Is it based? It's all gonna be just built.
Next year. I mean, we're gonna build the shelves, all that, medical office space, talk about the world future, so it's just medical office space.
I'll defer to the smarter people.
Do we have the lighting? You know, we don't have a lighting plan, it would be. If, if the chair decides it would be subject to whatever language on the sidewalk, if it's subject to ZBA, would be subject final engineering of lighting. It's a number of items.
We, we don't give a conditional for another reason too. You're taking this to the ZBA, anything happens to ZBA thinking that we've already approved everything without having reviewed it. We, we want to keep an open mind until after they've completed that, and then I think we're gonna be in a position to make a decision on this, to wrap it up.
Yeah, our next meeting is December 12th, but.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I mean. I'll get to the ZBA till January.
And you'll get.
And we get that slush and have, so we can meet on January 9th meeting, it's the ZBA.
I just asked if we gave her the treatment that's in December, that's all we have. We should have had everything, and everything, plus, that's it.
Right, can you wait until we can get back to you, I know for sure.
For sure.
Just wait here a few minutes, we'll, we'll see what, if you can get in to, well, the ZBA was going to cancel their meeting because there wasn't anything on, so. We just texted, to see if maybe if you get everything in tomorrow, we've had time to publish and have it on for this. I think it's a pretty quick application, if they're not an application, I know, I think when people tell me that, right?
Still tall copies. I hate to go here, but I'm gonna ask a question, I don't know. You got a sidewalk that's inside of the setback. Is there a variance that's needed to build the sidewalk?
Yeah.
That's my.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Can I say something about the process now? I represent the seller of the project, and we've been extending that transaction for several months because it had to take a bit of time to do the due diligence, we understand. But the. The current owner, he didn't give us a timeline as to when he would be done with allowing us extensions on his transaction, so give him something fairly positive, I think the board is, is in general, right direction, seems like. There are a few things that need to be done, but if there's something more, give them, not necessarily that approval, but some level of confidence. Condition upon engineering lighting, I think the ZBA is going to either approve or disapprove or modify, or that goes, so it's gonna be a definitive answer from that standpoint when they get there.
This has been moving through the channels.
Yeah.
And some of the delays because it changed, the plans have changed significantly.
Yes.
On a couple of occasions, and that caused. Real delay.
Yes.
But what we're hearing so far, we're, I think is favorable.
Yeah.
That's about as far as I think we can go at this point. Until you're back from the ZBA and we make sure that we're fully reengineering the. We believe that way, but that's the best we can do.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's hopefully something, I, I will note that the, the county did not have any. Comments, you know, or modifications at all on this project, so that's, that's positive as well.
And then the ZBA is basically just gonna review where that dumpster and the loading, there it is. The lighting, obviously, that's something that's, that's not an issue, it's not, the last item is basically the ZBA even finalizing the length of the.
And the last of the engineering, was there anything else on engineering?
This way, this way. And that's, I don't see anything that, that we should have done, where you want us to. I, I wouldn't say we've come this far, and it's a pretty positive project, everything they got to.
And the public hearing's closed, right?
Yes, all the hearing is closed.
Yeah.
So we can come, you've come very far, you're just, you're at the town end, perhaps, we think you're at the town end. I need up and let's get this done. Right, we're gonna let you know whether we can get this on for, check the January 9th date and clean it up in front of the ZBA in December.
Okay, what is that?
Okay. Moving on. Are you okay now?
Yeah, I'll read.
The next item on our agenda is an application by Twin Shore Properties. This is also known as the theater properties, scheduled today for a public hearing. This is a subdivision of land only, this is not for site plan approval, and this is multiple tax mapping numbers. At this point in time, we have not been declared lead agency, I would entertain a motion. Anne, you're third, motion to declare the paying more lead agency, second by Richard.
And this isn't an listed act.
And that is on a listed action, all in favor? Any opposed? We are lead agency, the council will be kind enough to lead us through.
Yeah. Unless it gets short. Okay, question number one, will this proposed action, which is just a subdivision, recall, and create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Will the proposed act result in a change in the use or intensity of use of that?
Yes.
Yeah. This proposed activity, which is the subject itself is. It's like, it's like on the paper, right?
That's true.
So it. So the answer is probably no or small impact, because it's just lying right now. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? So, so remember, we're just a subdivision, we're not, it's going to be, there. Which is why it's an unlisted action and why it's a short form, EAM. So I, so, trying to change that. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that causes this danger of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change to existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit piping or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, even though can incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed act have impact existing public or private water supply or private or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed act result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion flooding or drainage problems? Will the proposed act create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No, all of these questions having been answered on no or small impact, the chairman entertained a negative secret declaration.
Motion by Ed.
Second.
Second by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, did we properly publish notification of this public hearing?
Yeah.
Anyone here for a reading of that publication? Motion to waive. Second by Anne, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Reading is hereby waived, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Moved by Edmund, second by Ari, all in favor? Public hearing is hereby open, relative to Twin Shores. Anyone who cares to speak regarding this? Please stand, please stand and identify who you are, where you live.
I'm sure, Tom Siri, I represent Twin Shore Properties, as the property stated, we're here for subdivision approval. Only, and we were at the last special meeting and made some changes based on proposals, but Matt and John Charter's member of Twin Shore will quickly go over those changes that we made. Go with the random point to the screen and sort of follow along with us.
So, all we've, I mean, all we've changed is what we were directed to change when we were here last, at the last meeting. The land is now identified as Twin Shores Properties LLC, because as we explained, we take entitled with the property. We eliminated the small so-called sign lot and rolled that land into parcel four, which is the municipal or office lot. We provided access and frontage to the RA parcel in the back and labeled it as we were, as we were directed, and we sent a draft of a proposed easement to council for, for review. And we eliminated any reference to the signalization and access at the north end of Verdant Street, which was an issue. So there's now six, not seven lots, but that's all we changed, although then we folded and dashed the lines as we were directed to. Cleaned up that one question about the right of way line and the lot lines, but otherwise we didn't change the plan, it was literally what you're directed to do.
So, I do, that's my. So, the right, I did get proposed right away the agreement, and I, and I'll finish reviewing it, I can guess the comments on it, and it's centered to that, but that, the right of way. Sent it to that, but that the right of way has to actually run to the benefit. Of. More than just the lot that you have in the trade, right? So it needs to run to the benefit of. So it has to run to the benefit of this parcel.
Well, that we can do that.
Because it is unlikely that a road cut is going to. And that it needs to run to the benefit of this parcel.
Yeah.
Right, and. And it needs to. I don't know if if, you know, if we're worried about this parcel, it's gonna have its own road cut. I don't know.
I thought what was gonna happen was for purposes of this, and we can certainly add these two if you want. I mean. One and two. But then there's what we talked about last time is in the site plan approval process, which is clearly if not. Um we're gonna have to provide access easements through this lot to this lot, right? We show that potentially it would be.
I think we need to see that for the subdivision. Because if we're creating parcels that don't have access to roadway. How can we do that?
It does have that, it does have legal access, right? It could theoretically in sight plan approval, theoretically. You could legally, you could have access to my first street. We don't expect that's gonna happen.
It'll never happen.
Okay, so but I don't need to argue, but I think legally it could. So what, but we get the fact that nobody's gonna wanna see that. So in sight plan approval. What we will do is we will show how we would provide access and we provide easement between the.
I guess I don't understand, and I've pushed back on this a couple of times, at our last meeting, I'll push back again now. I have no idea why a reciprocal easement with all these lots. Is not necessary now to make sure they do have access. Because as you said, they may never get access to North Verdant Street. And if they don't have a reciprocal easement now. How can you ever build that?
So I I think the legal answer, because once we originally were trying to do subdivision at site plan at the same time. Clearly, that was a no.
Yeah.
So since it's just subdivision, then I think the requirement and I'm, you know, I don't mean. But I think legally the board could provide access. We don't expect you're gonna, so we're not gonna submit something to show that. We're gonna show you easements and how it would work. In the site plan approval, we'll have to show you all the easement. And you actually made it clear that when we do site plan approvals, we come in for the for one of these, then we came in for this one.
Yeah.
We would have to show you how the whole thing worked out, which is what we expect to do.
And Jamie, I guess I'm the I'm the turn to you. I don't know how we create the laws. That don't have, and I understand what he's saying, that that North Burick Street is right there.
Oh, everything does.
I agree. Because because the this board needs to create like a a plan. That is a reason of the development of land. And I think the discussion about the right of way is that. That's where everybody's. That's the only way you're gonna get into this full development. So we need to assure that all of the individual lots. Have a right of way over that. So since this it this doesn't really join. Then there has to be some sort of access and you can change it. But it can be changed and it can be modified later, but but we're but this is creating. Essentially an unbillable lot because they're never going to be allowed access to.
Is there a difference in the subdivision, I'm asking? Isn't there a difference in the subdivision process between what legally could happen and what we all recognize you're gonna allow? Isn't that?
No, that's why the subdivision. The subdivision has to create billable lots. That's why that one that was the little one. You got rid of it, because like, yeah, we can't do that. So we're not gonna create something that's not buildable. So. I I think that 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 access needs to be shown.
I think that was in the agreement, though, Jamie, that was sent to. Non-legal terms like the shotgun approach. For access to all of the parcels. It's just not stated in there with any meets and bounds descriptions or anything like that, because we don't know what. Their development is going to be for the other sub-divided parcels. But the language is in there in that agreement for, but again, the non-legal term of a shotgun approach to allow for those easements.
There's existing driveways to those lots.
But even if there isn't, right, even if there isn't, that agreement calls for that approach to have those. In the in the subdivision.
Not an attorney. You don't need to be. However, when you create subdivided lots. Tomorrow, if we approve this, tomorrow you go out and sell one of these lots. If it does not have some access.
To which it does.
To the.
Right.
Well, it it it's on North Burick Street, but whether or not they that curb cut is a whole nother discussion.
Sure.
If we don't make sure it has access.
But it does, it does influence the agreement that we provided to council.
Okay, I haven't seen it. It's reciprocal, he's been agreeing that all these lots have access to.
Absolutely. Oh, okay. I I haven't seen it.
But.
That's what that's what.
File subdivision map.
That's what you.
And you can't, I mean, Jamie, as you know, you can't file the easements before, you can file it immediately after you have a subdivision.
The the declaration of easement.
Yeah.
Needs to be noted on here, right, referred to. And referred to on the map, which you did. I stopped that part of it. I didn't have a chance to review. That was a shortly. Um so. But it needs to be shown on here as the right of way. That ties into this agreement and then this is the map and that's it. It's the map and it needs to show and it needs to show on here that it's access to every. Lots.
In, I mean, let's just talk for a second about that. You understand the the general concept of the cross-access type agreements when you have. No, no, but I'm saying you do and you know normally what you're trying to accomplish is to say it's okay for you to drive across this.
So this is the subdivision map. It just it just needs to reflect it. It just needs to. Be on here. So when the next, when. That's what I'm saying.
Sit on that with your approval of the declaration and it being.
And the words need to be on here.
Yes.
On here and.
You you just the words specific, right? Cause. Where it's going. For this here and here, and we need to provide easements between here and here.
Or.
Well, that's how it's gonna work, right?
Or however you would say.
But that would be acceptable. And that would be exactly. I think it's what you said, this, the easement. Here and here, here and here, here and here. And then we will provide an easement.
And if we look at it in a big picture, I'm not sure. Do that. That should also be the residential. If that is the desire that this roadway actually will be to the residential.
Again, we don't know that. That goes to the whole issue of that's gonna be, you know, that's under contract to the third party developing. And they're gonna have to come in and convince you as to how, what they wanted to do. They're gonna do cycle like current. They're gonna show access. And they may want to suggest that it comes to here and you guys may say yes or no, and they may just try to come out here.
It may not be us, though, because if you sell this parcel to somebody, whether it's the town or whoever. But they may say, no, I'm not gonna give you access.
That theoretically, if if you can.
Yeah, I just sort of think on the meeting on the eighteenth. It is towards the end, but I remember you and Jamie having discussions about the right of way.
Yeah.
And I remember her saying it needs to be shown on the map because these parcels need to be accessed and just be shown access. So I know we asked for that.
I I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah, but it's not on, it needs to be on the map, but it's not. I know we asked. Yeah.
This was what we were specifically talking about is this right here.
Yeah.
Right. Right, but she's only in favor of one person.
Correct.
Right, so that's so that so that now needs to be updated. When the notice updated and it's in favor of parcel one.
And.
Parcel two.
And then.
Parcel. What's this? What's this big one? Right, so that's three. And then this, that's the only, that's the only one that that's hotter. Is the the little one in the front that has road frontage. But if it's going to be for, if it's gonna be developed for commercial use, it is not going to be allowed access for burden. I mean, the county's not gonna.
We're a hundred percent agree, but I guess, I guess what we thought when we separated, when you had to separate, right? It's like medical English, we we tour or whatever that. I thought that now we're back to a legal process to identify the lots and to make them leave. And I thought. Okay, yeah, in this piece, which we originally this to get to right away to these to parcel six. I thought that this had frontage and technically has curb cut today, has access to burden. We know we would never get it approved, so that's why we talked about having easements and all that. But we I thought we specifically discussed when we came back for site plan approval for the first lot. Which we expect we're gonna do one at a time to get leasing by, is we would have to show you all the easements between all the lots.
Yeah, a lot of things, a lot of things will happen when that.
Right.
Happens.
That's right.
What? If, you know, y'all kill over tomorrow and this is filed. It it's gonna be a lot. It's it's gonna be there. Inappropriate, it doesn't have the access that would be a plan to develop it commercially. So. And this is, this is up to the, is there anything else, Doug, that you want on this map? Yeah, that's not gonna, that's not gonna. Yeah. Right, but we did see something that. We did see something that we thought would, you know, maybe if they're big enough, they have the lodge, they have the frontage. Um do you, do you have anything else?
No, I don't, I don't know how it comes into play in this and I don't. You know, parallels with site plan, but you know, in the code for um. Subdivision one twenty-seven dash thirty-three for women are at plant approval. Um it's the. That portion of the code says that uh requires contours, topo, roads, utilities, restrictions and confidence.
Yeah, I mean, it's a commercial, that's the place for the residential subdivision. So I think that's how that's been interpreted. So I I think that this is fine. If they can't figure out on the token, I'd fill that in. Yeah. So I I think this is, this is fine. I would not have a problem with an approval, you know, pending that shows changes, but that's up to you.
I I would. I would suggest one other item condition. And that's if we did approve this, that no lot can solve until we have those cross-easements taken care of. Because once you sell.
Well, yes, and I have a a grant. And now that we're understanding what's gonna be here, we'll we'll fix it up. Now, make sure that it meets the legal.
Yeah.
And there and there's a couple of things just that I I'll put in that agreement. Like I said, it was, it was a short week last week, so we're gonna get to it. But but I plan to stay at it. I think we just start it. I got it.
I think we're in a position to go forward with the rest of the uh. Sir, I. You have a date in December for the ZDA, okay? And therefore, uh we'll put you on the January ninth. January ninth back here. Thank you, sir. Thank you for waiting.
I'll give you all that paperwork before I leave tonight. And you only need one hard copy and one of my contracts.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
And money. Oh, yeah, money.
We have opened a public hearing. I think someone had raised their hand. Would you like to come forward and identify who you are and where you live before you start talking to us?
I'm president of Wookie Drive. And I've been here for years. And so I've I've seen things happen, not happen. And being in the verdict street, I remember one time the bus recall, there are those two houses, I'm not sure if they're there anymore. But they were, they're gonna develop that area and they sold the homes and then for whatever reason, they could not develop them. Because of the environmental impact. And so that development stopped. And all these people there had a vacate and then they were still empty for for a long time. Um I was interested to hear how it was set up, no impact, no impact, and we don't know. What is going to be built on this land? Um I don't understand the access. If they can't get onto the verdict street, how many people, whatever access do they have left? My question.
Right.
What would that be?
They they have to get access side of verdict street.
Oh, you said that they can't.
Well, we don't know that.
We're looking for a single, a single access on verdict that we're fairly certain is going to be approved and. You know, our criterion, there's a lot that would have to be done, you know, for that to happen. But the lots along the front, uh that's what we're talking about. But there's gonna be one access. You can have a bunch of accesses.
But we don't know exactly if there'll be um high density, commercial, individual homes, apartment shit.
None of that is in front of us.
Right.
And I wasn't aware, I didn't just pay attention, that the place that you were talking, the man here was talking about. That's by the um town center, right by the northeast medical center, that new building or no?
Yeah, right behind the uh.
Yes, I know, that's town center.
Yes.
Okay, so then, because I'm just thinking again now, that's gonna be more traffic naturally, they hope. Coming, coming in and out. And um I know at one point in time, they actually talked about developing some theater land that was in back of roadway. But then they were able to find the documents through some people who had lived on Wookie Drive quite some time. That's how that was not to be developed. It was supposed to remain a wetland when it was donated. So this is theater property also, is that correct? But this is theater property that's being sold, it's not, hasn't been donated. Sure, okay, because there's some other thing, don't need quite a bit of property also for wild, to stay wild. And so I guess those are my concerns that when you. When you still develop it and people are already buying it and then they have. Um the desire to start developing it, how much control do we have? For the amount of um use that it's going to have for traffic. And just for the other um impact on our environment, on our land. I mean, I've been here when we had. The stream back here that, you know, was huge, the flooding that we had. I know that's supposedly been taken care of. But just that we don't overdevelop this area, which is somewhat of a a left.
But the control we have is that they're gonna be required to come back in front of us. And when they decide they're gonna put in some commercial development, which would make sense right off of verdict street. They they gotta come back in front of us for site plan approval to tell us exactly what they're intending to do and how they're intending to do it. Uh it's my understanding that they likely are not gonna come back with regard to residential, that the property is gonna be sold, a portion of the property. And that whoever is gonna develop relative to residential is gonna have to come before this board. And explain to us exactly what they're doing, how many units they're putting in, where they're putting it in, and show us site plans. Uh as as to how they're gonna develop it. So we're gonna maintain a degree of control over that.
And so the access. And so the access would be on verdict street.
Yes.
Hopefully just one access, that's a word, one eyes, one access.
And, and there had been discussion of that probably four years ago when he had a property was going to be developed and I saw that the Department of Transportation had approved a location of, of uh one traffic light going into there. Uh, so we will have maintained some control on the brick street. Uh, and I think they've needed a traffic light for quite a while, additional traffic light.
Well, so keep developing, we do. And you know, you can kind of think of it as a village and it just keeps growing, which I know is just part of what happens.
Well, this is a little bit different because today we're only talking about subdividing the land and we're not approving anything relative to building.
But eventually that will happen.
Most likely it will.
I don't know, so why would you buy the lease? Those are just some of my concerns.
Two houses you mentioned, I believe the developers told us both of them are coming down.
Yeah, but that's been years.
Well.
I mean, forever, and that was, they were taking down, so everybody thought everything they thought that it was gonna happen. And I, I just remember destroying why it didn't, but.
Well, we're all looking forward to those towns coming down.
But it's sold that way in the first place until I knew for sure.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone out there? Motion by Ann, second by Richard to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing is hereby closed.
Well. That's my question. I mean, if um if we launch to. If I'm on the next meeting, I know it's, it's a fast stuff. Have them uh put that on or you can get a. Additional approvals.
We, we can do an additional approval condition on uh the modification of the uh, the map, subdivision map, and the addition of the uh. Uh, railways or reasons for that either. The properties.
Could be in the condition that they will not sell. For subdivided lots until there is a certain.
It's going to, it's going to be in place.
It's gonna be already in place. I cannot sign the subdivision map until it's already in place on that.
Okay, okay.
May I, um, if John can bring the map back up, can you, can you mind bringing it back up?
Oh, for this fact.
But yeah, bring it back up.
Bring a piece of.
Bring the piece of paper. Um. Just. You're the developer and you're, so if you can say where you would want to put that, um, to spur to that other. Map. So there.
Where's Joe Durant?
Question.
Great. No, we don't need that. Thank you. So, so we can, you need to provide access to this, not offer further. Can we do easements through here?
We can.
That's how we plan to do it. That's what, that's how we're planning to do it.
So basically, come off of here.
No. Customers come in here and then go here. Okay, they come from this lot to this lot, these are the three lots. Because this theoretically sold. So we will, you want us to redraft the document to provide all those easement?
Right, and, and the, we would actually have the um access easement for everything else. And label it access to lots.
Hit the lot, still wait. Parcel four. Really the way you want it. We had talked when he came in, that you're gonna put a right way up the first, over that. Over. Kind of got a big flag in it.
Maybe it's the way you want it, I don't know.
The commercial floor was like this now.
Yeah, we, well.
Because when we talked, you, you had talked about bringing that in here and this into there. And making this a right away over everything.
Well, we, what we tried to do was, what we didn't want to do was change the access we showed you, so we just add, we just widen it to get the frontage, because we needed the frontage. Right, because originally this looked like this, there's.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you've got, you've got kind of a flag line here. I didn't know if you wanted to create these two cars or something like this to have a right of way. This is just, it's just an odd shaped line.
Okay, well.
Right, I mean, I, I, you would, you would normally see this, this line brought over into here someplace, and this would be a right of way.
Yeah.
Right now it's.
But this is, this is dedicated to Doug, Doug Rowe.
Yeah, but it's still be a right of way, right? If, right now it's. Right, if you look at.
So you're saying make this.
I don't know.
Add to this lot?
It's up to you guys. But it's just an odd, it's just an odd looking. Normally you bring these lines together and you can have an easement over the two parcels. You wouldn't have the easement over just one parcel.
We're talking, we're talking easement.
I would, I would prefer to just leave it a little like that and we'll pick up the easement. And then if we have to change something later, we will, but I don't want to start with the one that we put.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll redraft it.
Okay. So here's, here's uh what, what I would propose, that this would be um a true. That submitted. Right place start the parcel three.
Oh, you have, this is, I mean, you have, you've placed in submit.
Eleven twenty one.
Oh, sorry.
Um, and the, with that final map subject to engineering and legal approval. Um, subject to a legal review and approval of the Declaration of Easement. Um, which is to be executed and filed as soon as the subdivision map is filed. Um, then Chair could sign the map and uh legal engineering finalization. And the map needs to be added in order to be on and back at how many. Those, right? Is, is there anything else that you can do?
You only really want to say. Is that, we've been focused primarily. With the subdivision map that we're proving is worth the settlement. Yeah, it's the entire subdivision. I just want to make sure everyone understands.
And access is given to that. By this, by my person.
I would entertain a motion to either accrue whether the dependencies are generated by council or for disapproval. But this uh, this would definitely make a motion, you will say. Motion by Ed, second by Richard to approve the subject to the dependencies laid out by council. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Jamie, to that point, for instance. Personal five is now gonna have two houses on there, I don't know if those are.
Well. I mean, it's a legal matter for me. It's a moment until they do something. Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, the next site on our agenda is an application by Grazie Zazara. Uh, this has been referred to the planning board for a zone change recommendation to go back to the town board. Eastern Hills Bible Church is seeking to change the zoning from RA to RM. This is probably located at forty six hundred Enders Road, Manlis, on tax map number one seventeen point two dash one dash four. We've been provided. Does anybody receive any? Everybody?
Yes.
Predictment we have is that the uh town board has changed the zone for RM. And reminding everybody that of the RM originally and. This district is designated to retain the existing residential character of the established neighborhood. While permitting unobtrusive uses of the commercial nature, which would be regulated in such a manner as to maintain and preserve. The resident character of the just adjacent areas, as well as to provide the transition between residential areas and non-residential areas. In reviewing. Current standards of RM zone, that would also commit now at this time, retail sales to be going into an RM zone. Restaurants, food factory houses, and indoor entertainment facilities. And the predicament that I have is I'm having a hard time understanding how retail sales and uh. Restaurants are gonna be maintaining the residential character of the community of the uh. Of the area. Uh, I'm really troubled by that.
Do you have any more advice on this?
There were good hearings, there was, there was input um. When this was under consideration.
The planning board was not contacted, uh, we were not asked for any suggestions on this. And uh, this is, this, this is gonna open up a number of issues, especially regarding the corridor, the east, kind of seems to be a corridor where those homes are all in RM. And uh, basically it would permit. Retail sales to be going in there, restaurants to go in there in the middle of the residential neighborhoods, uh, indoor facilities. Council has prepared a brief statement recommending that the zone change request be tabled and a further review. And pending receipt from the town board. Of uh. The new upcoming recommendations for uh zoning in your comprehensive plan that they have been working on for over a year now. I'm opening the floor to anybody on the board to see what their feelings are on this.
Chairman, is a former board member. And twelve years and board members prior to me being. The concern was always uh who fired their work for them, maintain the non-heary boulevard. Okay, that it would always have their residential looking. Uh, and which would be not retail where you can't really do that, you know, um. At one ninety two as well, that's our influence there. Uh, so I don't know. Maybe, I don't know, thought process, I didn't, shame on me, I didn't really get a, I didn't have a public hearing on this, or. It was too bad, I mean, I wouldn't get involved in a planning board, you know, but we just come in to find out. What their process thinking was, because really this throws the RM right out the window and it will be. You know, so I don't see, I, I, I'm a little confused with the thought process, but that's, that's my concern.
In addition, should the retail, which is noted, is also an increase in the uh coverage on the lot.
Yes.
Thirty or fifty percent dramatically changes for what they're doing by RM. Again, with no input from the planning board, I could, I could say that. Whether or not this is a great idea.
I, I. Go ahead.
Okay. I um. Knew, I, I mean, I watched the meetings and um as much as I can and I, so I remember something, but honestly I did not do my due diligence. Um, to act at the RM zoning, um. New zoning. So I called, um, and I, we have a lot of questions on right now, so just wanted to ask a question, but before I say that. Um, with regards to the retailer and the restaurant, um, driving through that area, I'm a little less concerned just because we have. Other retail shops. In that general area, um, and this wasn't sure. And it wouldn't really make approach on the residential area, that's how I kind of feel about that. But I also want to question, if you can remind me, because I call it. Um, why you were directed to requesting the RM, to a zone change to RM? Is it the, otherwise it would be just be like a R three or, you know.
Well, my understanding was the, you know, we wanted the flexibility initially when we looked at it, we thought it might be an event center, but. Um, after looking through the feasibility of that, we, we bagged that as a concept and. Uh, all we want to do is a component of uh office space and apartments, so it seems to fit under. Uh, what, what RM allows to do there. I'm not sure any of the other zoning allowed for both of those uses in the same property.
Yeah, I think we do need to get a better idea from what the town board envisioned for this and for RM, um. Especially because isn't it right up close to a village area? Um, so I think it would be good to explore that, but if that rich.
No, I was just, I was. We need to be very careful. I mean, the town board has the stories to change zones, you know, they're looking at their recommendation. But I think, you know, you begin, the number one, change the zoning classifications. To allow uses that have never been permitted you into those zoning areas. You, you open up a door. That we better be careful of how we treat it going forward. That church does not look like residence. Absolutely doesn't look like residence. And that code says we want to preserve the residential character, so on and so forth. We're not preserving anything. So to make a recommendation to go to an RM there. In my opinion, it doesn't make a lot of sense because it's not residential to begin. So, uh, uh, and again, maybe you're right, we need to find out what the town board was thinking about, but if the town board changes. That location to RM. With the changes that they made. What the applicant wants to do may not be what the next owner wants to do, and we can have restaurants and retail and knows what in that building. So I, I'm very cautious about. What we do at this point, and I think we should really be careful. But again, it's, it's just a recommendation, the town board has the authority to do with it.
I think we had three choices. We have a choice of making a positive recommendation on uh the zone change. We have the choice of making a negative recommendation on the zone change, or we have a recommendation at the table until we hear from the. Town board on what their comprehensive plan is and where we are thinking to go.
So I think we'll make the motion to table it until we find out what the town board's intention is.
Intention with respect to what? The RM or this person?
Both. Well, both. Yeah, I mean, it, it came to us to change this to RM on a piece of land that's never been residential. Yeah, if I could just add what things are, the church building is certainly is a retail, it's not a real match. The restaurant. So it's sort of a, a place of its own to me. But I mean, I, I would almost think that if, if it could be used, the capacity it is and shielded. But that still doesn't automatically make it RM, but it doesn't fit the. Now it does, but yet so is a lot of others.
Well, but, but the new proposed law, the law that just got passed is exactly the same as the other one that. You're maintaining and preserving the residential character and that church is not gonna preserve any residential character. So we have a motion made by Richard, second by Ed, uh, to table that. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna notify the town board that we are taking this further direction. Uh, Valerie, you asked beforehand of the excuse, uh, you're right, a few minutes before. Next item on our agenda is an application by Woodland Hills Subdivision, also known as Cole Blaine Development. This is their second. This is their second presentation for a sixteen lot subdivision that if we do eighty pole lane. I'll pass that number one on four dash one dash thirty-nine point two. The council, I did want to point out that we did receive. With the media, there's a one stage now. A conventional plan. And I'm not sure where you're going with it, so the floor is yours.
Where we're going with it is really trying to understand. What direction this board did let us to go in, and believe we have a direction that. Directions, so I'll start with that, but before getting into it, I'm Chris Danaher. I'm a attorney at hand at Gester Room, I live at One Hymen Lane in Danville. We were here about a month ago discussing a proposed plan and. Though, though, and I, I announced your last time, it was in three days' time. But as this board mentioned, it's a new application, we know the overview. And, but this board also seemed to have certain matters that permeate through any plan on this site. So I thought, you present the plan, the sixteen lot subdivision. We brought people tonight to try to address what I thought were really four points that this board raised in that meeting. And then try to go forward from that. So that's, that's my goal, our goal. What, what, the four points are this, it was, is reconsideration of the cluster plan, we provided a cluster plan, that was the plan from the past. We thought that was the process to go forward, to use that cluster plan, reduce the lot count, but still have a cluster development. What I heard from Tim Protashki and the board was maybe that's not the way to go. So that's why we're coming with that plan tonight. The second thing was talking, was to talk about the vegetation, preservation of vegetative, existing vegetation, what happened in the past with the vegetation. And I want to touch on that a little bit. Third was site work, cut and fill, numbers were being thrown out. And I have the people here tonight that I really wanted to focus on that as well. And then fourth was really stormwater management, generally speaking, how to fight, well, handle stormwater management. Try to get this board, explain to this board where we're going with the stormwater management, with this type of plan. And then from there, obviously add meat to the bones later and get more detail because this board deserves it and then we'll get it. Don't try and really again get that direction. I'm here tonight, I'm going to give you a general overview of the site, I'm going to be quick because I know we're all tired, day Monday after holiday. But I'm here with Vince, Ryan, Keplinger, Freeman, he's going to give a little brief overview of the evolution of the site, rest west, wetlands. Add some color to my, my presentation, my general overview. Root zone is here for stormwater facilities to really address that concern or issue with this board. And Joe Mueller is going to address site work and cut. It's our goal, I'm hopeful that it gives you a comprehensive overview and then we can just take the next step, whatever that step is, we just try and go forward. So the plan, the plan you have before you is a sixteen lot subdivision. The site is zoned RA, so it's residential. It is comprised of approximately thirty acres of land. It has one residential housing unit on it. We heard again from the board about the cluster development and maybe this site's not best suited for what a cluster development's purpose and intent is. So that being the case, we went back to the drawing board. What we've gotten for you tonight is a conventional plan, the sixteen lot subdivision, fifteen new lots, one existing lot, sixteen lots. They're all legally conforming lots, they won't require any variances for these lots. The lots vary in size, they go from minimally above an acre to over three acres of land. The price point for the development, we're talking about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars minimally and up from there. For the houses that will be built on this property. There is a separate HOA lot. That will be owned by the HOA, the HOA will be formed in accordance with New York law. And it will oversee that stormwater management and the, the gatekeeper essentially and handle that. And get fees from the homeowners and deal with that situation. The site is served, will be serviced by public water and sewer. And as to the point, I just want to touch on the vegetation, I. The goal here is to preserve as much existing vegetation that's healthy. And, and keep it. It is no interest of the developer to spend money to remove trees that don't need to be anymore. They're going to provide, we will provide a grading plan, it will be reviewed by, approved by this town, the vegetation will be set on that. But I can assure you that they're not going to remove anything that isn't approved by this town. And they're not, they're not interested in removing more than they have. With the fifteen homes that we're proposing, we believe that. It will result in just a quicker takedown schedule, shorter construction period, less disturbance, less traffic. And just a better development for the town, for the neighborhood. And still, as I mentioned in my prior presentation, financially feasible. To the developers in this project for. So with that, I'm going to let Vince give you guys some color to what I was talking about.
Good evening, once again, Vincent Ryan with Keplinger Freeman Associates. And you see before you the site plan that Chris was referencing. Against the conventional site plan, we do need the forty thousand square foot requirement with a hundred and fifty foot. Frontage line at the middle of the line of the building, which is, and most lots exceeds even more than that. This is a little slow, so bear with me. This is just a quick going back in time here. Nineteen fifty-one. Nineteen sixty-six. Nineteen ninety-four and two thousand and three, when the current structure was constructed. You can see that the land was farmland and you can see a lot of the vegetation. That you, I'll show you in a second here, still remains to this day. This is just a quick thirty, even less than thirty second video of the site that we took just a couple of weeks ago. While you can go a little slow, but you can get a sense of that, that line of trees that you saw in historical imagery. That's that back lot and here's the existing home with all the vegetation behind it. This is looking west. And this is. This is on the south property line here, and then if you see the drone flies over. And we'll turn back looking east. What's important to note is previously we did have someone go out and look at this area in here. There are comments in regard to. An intermittent stream and some offsite drainage that comes from this property here that we sub through. You can kind of see what's going on here. We recently had GCA up there as of last month. Reassess the environmental conditions of this area. Julia, who was our environment consultant for that, is in the process of providing that report, but she felt when she was out there, she had their comment. Felt there was nothing there, the army corps would take precedent over. So she'll be providing that report at a later time, but those are her, her standard comments from the amount of site. That'll catch up and that's looking back, back east for you with that, that area in question again, this is where you would be seeing the stormwater. And basin, there's even on the back, there's that existing mature tree line. Speaking to stormwater, I will now let you come up and speak, speak to those issues.
Hello, everyone, my name is Arizona with RZ Engineering. We, we did the stormwater management. For literary design, this is a new project, so we've got a new plan, which has less lot than the previous plan, so. What we did was we. We had a storm, a stormwater manager facility, which has been pointed at that, it's right on that side of the site. That site is governed by the D E, or the whole site, including. Every part of it is governed by the New York State DEC. I have to follow that, your town has to follow that. You are the MS four, but you are also subject to New York State DEC regulations like everyone else in New York State is. So there's design criteria and there's New York State Stormwater Design Manual that all of us must follow. I can't make up stuff, Mr. Miller can't make up stuff, Johnny down the street can't make up stuff, we all have to follow similar. Regulations that are performed in that manual, and that manual has certain design criteria that you have to design from, so I can't just. Create this thing any way I want, it has a bunch of engineering design criteria that follow.
Can I ask you a question regarding that?
Sure, if you don't mind.
You've got the stormwater basins. How does the water from the balance of the project get there?
Good question. I'll also take that from you as well.
I see no drainage ways, no easements, no nothing, so just how does, how does it get there?
Well, there, it's late on here, so it's difficult for you to see, but there are easements between some of these lots where drainage swales will go, then there's. There will be stormwater management, you can see little bump outs in the right away, or in the right away line here, here and here and here. There's one there, there's one there, there's a stormwater bike network, a collection and conveyance system. That will collect all the stormwater from all of the area that's included in here, including the swell that goes down here and enters the basin there. The, the catch basin is collecting, come down and discharge here. There's some drainage down along this center there. And then there's also a stormwater network of pipes coming down this side that'll discharge and be either this four bay. And if I get too technical, let me know that there's a, there's a four bay here and four bay here pretty pre-treated, and then the main basin is here. So that collection and conveyance system between these swales. And the, there's no swell here, and then the collection and bike network in the roadway will collect it and move it to there.
And who owns everything you just described leading down to the four bay?
Everything in here is within the town right away, so the town owns it along with the roads, just like you would up. Outside of here, any of the catch basins or pipes or anything that's in there.
You just showed me in between lots twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, who owns that?
Yeah, there's an easement in here. They collected that where the drainage will go.
And even to who?
To the town.
Why would we want that?
Because it's part of the stormwater network.
Typically, and I mean, speak up, anybody else, typically, when we do something like this, it's owned by the HOA. We have an easement to step in if the HOA does not maintain it, we don't take care of it.
That's correct, there's a stormwater management, every project in New York State has to have as part of the SWIP and, and the contract closeout has to have a stormwater management agreement with, with the MS four municipality. And it's a legal document that says exactly what you're saying, which is. If the responsible party, which the homeowners association and all that, they can all this, it's, it's all part of that. However, the town would like it, within the right way, that's a little more difficult, obviously you got to control that, but. These, these easements and things can be owned by the homeowners association, maintained by them, and then, like you said, when. The stormwater agreement typically, just generally what it says is that if the. State homeowner association X doesn't mow the swales and you warn them three or four times that. The legal agreement allows the town to go and do it and build the homeowners association. That answers your question, then, yeah, that's pretty much better.
I have a question on the pan.
Sure.
Is this, what is, how is this embarrassing to what you initially.
Almost the same. So a so-called a four million gallons. Well, that's deceiving, and it's not entirely accurate. The top contrary, moving around the top of this thing in the vern is, if you were to fill it all the way to the top, we'd have one point one million gallons. But the water never gets there because there's an emergency spillway that's below, and then there's an upper level control structure that's lower than that in elevation. So the water doesn't get there to collect that much, it's probably under, it's under a million gallons, and that's only for a short period of time, when the peak storm shows up. In a hundred year storm event, so maybe once in a hundred years. You might get something close to that for maybe twenty minutes to half an hour. The peak goes up and then it comes down and it doesn't stay up very long, so you're only talking about a few minutes. Ninety-nine percent of the time, you got two hundred and ninety-two thousand gallons in that thing, that's it. That's it.
We've seen that in a couple of hundred years, towards the last ten years.
For comparison, the Swan Pond has two point four million gallons. Which is double. Well, Melas, probably Melas is more. And there's, there's a tree pond here, it's just a little pop of Melas that holds, it's also four feet taller than this thing. So you can see actually, hence the, in there. There's, this is the swine line here. See that red line right there? That's our pond. The blue is the Swan Pond, and that doesn't even include that Swan Pond. This thing fails and you got a lot bigger crystal pride, but then you got in our. In our situation, and this has, the Natrium is allowed to walk right up through it and around it, you're promoting tourism around this thing, right? Ours isn't going to be allowed to do that. And it's a lot of fun, so back to where I was going with my little presentation. The, the facility that we designed, as you can go back to the grading plan there just for a second. We. We hear the town and we hear some of your concerns, okay, so. The project team tried to go back and say, what can we do to try and alleviate some of the concerns that have been voiced by the town, and Chris brought up one of them. Which is, you know, the pond is what happens if, if it leaks or. Those things that come up, I can kind of deliberate on here. We provided some redundant storage right here. This redundant storage can collect water from offsite. Which currently flows to our property willy-nilly. Our property, by the way, is downstream, it's just, it's kind of going on and off for me, but. This, this area of land here is downstream of all these properties and all these properties on Holley. In other words, all the water comes off of here and all the water from this entire. Watershed all the way up, all the way over here. All comes to us. It's not controlled by any stormwater management facility, it just comes. And we have to deal with it, it comes right through our property. Unchallenged by anything, so. In order to try and help the community with some of their flooding issues and, and issues. Not only from situations like this, but, you know, downstream. We've added some redundant storage in about the same side. As our, our pond. To collect some of this and detain it. Choke it off, allowed to sit there and bleed out to downstream drainage ways, so we're going to try and pick up some of the extra. And this, this thing does, you know, we've done three things here, it kind of protects us against some flooding upstream. It reduces the discharges by choking it off the downstream areas. And it also protects downstream areas from anything that might overtop this. So you got a redundant set, or redundant area on here. That's lower than, than this stream that will allow it to be collected, detained and released. In a proper fashion, and that's in addition to this, that does knock down downstream runoff. From our site, which is not anything offsite, but just up, just our site itself. It reduces it by up to twenty percent.
So if I could ask.
Sure.
So this offsite flow that you talked about.
Yes, from, from here.
Yeah, did that occur prior to buying the property? Or had that, did it just start last year?
No, when, when the development was built, they didn't install any stormwater management.
Okay.
So. Now it's just left to create whatever.
Okay, so it's something additional, it's something that's been happening for years.
Yep, which is part of. Yeah, which is part of the reason some of the concerns downstream are happening, so, so.
Just by me.
Yeah.
Um. The discharge is coming on to the, uh, Rogers property, our property. Um, it's coming through an easement, but it's at the cul-de-sac of Cahill and Churchill. And there's two stand pipes where that water drains uncontrollably and green clothes. On to our property, that's been a condition since.
Exactly, the stream flows through, or.
It's like you hear, there, here.
That is where the intermittent stream runs too, uh, when I say intermittent, it's dry the majority of the year, it's only when you have. Uh, a flood condition that that water like to charge from the town, people stand pipes under our property. Now, what we've done is before, we ignored that at the town's request, because we didn't want to, uh, disturb that with the army. Um, and then we found out after, uh, looking at it further, that in reality, it was considered a man-made condition. It's an intermittent stream, it's nothing that we created, it's nothing that's natural. Um, so rather than ignore it, we are now diverting it right into the lower retention basin, if you can bring that up. That's, um, which lessens the conditions of flooding downstream. So we are the solution, not the problem now. We are addressing the problem head-on and controlling that water and discharging it at a much slower rate. Before, and to this day, because we haven't done anything on the property, it just re-flows through the property, unflowed condition, and comes out through the cul-de-sac. Or, not cul-de-sac, but the storm drainage right there on Churchill.
Yep, yeah, it's, it, this, this, this intermittent stream here i- is caused and, and created. By the pipe that comes out of here with the drainage from this subdivision over here, you know, that, that other one from, you know, on Churchill, the cul-de-sac. And it's just how it works, so we're trying to pick some of that up.
That's the.
And detain it.
You see it?
Yeah.
So it's coming right from this cul-de-sac, right here on Churchill, but this is how it comes through the property.
It goes just like that, and then comes out down here.
So we've direct, redirected right into the overflow.
Some of this water will be allowed to, wh- when it, when it starts getting, when this channel starts getting overwhelmed, and it's only a foot deep, it's not very deep.
How does it run uphill?
Pardon?
How does it run uphill?
It doesn't run uphill.
But I mean. This is below it.
Which, which, man?
This one below here.
This, this here?
Twenty-five feet.
This thing?
One in the south, the south side.
This even, this, this property here is downhill from this. This drains downhill this way. These properties on here are all upstream uphill of this, these property. These properties right here, all uphill of all of this.
Right.
This water comes this way, this water comes this way.
But this water is below.
Down here.
Yeah.
And it's all.
That's up, this is uphill from here.
It's all traveling thus.
Okay.
Yes, well, it kind of comes together, this comes this way, this comes this way, and they all meet right there.
Okay.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so what we've done is, we've created this pocket area that's about the same size as this. To try and let this, when it gets choked up in here, back up and fill up in here. So that it doesn't just willy-nilly flow down through here and blast down into the culprit under Churchill. And if anything were to happen to this, it's also gonna get caught in here and not blast its way down. So we've added a whole bunch of extra storage in here. That's normally empty, it's normally got nothing in it. This thing just goes like a little creep and, and flows through there normally, but. If this pinch point gets overwhelmed and this thing fills up, it doesn't let anymore go down there, it'll, it'll subside. That, that right there, and this right, this right here will protect from this, from anything we just heard. This right here will be both, it'll protect from up here, and it will also protect if something happens to that. So, we try to hear what your concerns were and do something about it. Which is, this was our solution for that, to try and help with downstream issues that we know we have. Um, so. This, our, like I was trying to say before, this facility is not a large facility, it's relatively small. Um, if you look at some of the other ones that, you know, Vince had on that other thing, if, if you look at some of the other ones in your, in your community, there's a lot of other larger facilities with. That are not only bigger, but taller than ours, um, that. All function well, these things are. These basins are, are tried and true methods, they're not experimental, they've been putting these things in since the seventies, and they really started refining in the two thousands. They're all well researched, they don't fail, they, they're tried and true methods, the D E C certifies them, the D E C. In their manual tells you the criteria and, and the construction, um, methods and geometry to use so that they don't fail. Um, they're very, very reliable, these things, and, and we, we've been doing them for twenty years, we've got no failures. We've got, we've had situations where, um, in the middle of construction, while this whole thing would be open. On, on a different site, we had this happen, where the whole site was open, there was no grass on. And, and the contractor put a pipe in the wrong way, and he sent eighty something acres of extra water into my pond that was built. And not only the pond hadn't cooled off, and it, it was during that Binghamton storm, whenever your numbers down in Binghamton, the whole. So it's what Hannah River down there got flooded, and, and, uh. Our facility is probably safe as well, by having it in there, and it had an extra eighty acres in it, so they're, they're very, um. Conservatively designed and they're, and they're well laid out in the stormwater manual, um. So if you follow the manual, which ours does, uh, D E C has, has reviewed our plan and reviewed this facility. And told us that it meets all of their requirements. Damn and otherwise. So, this facility should be a benefit to the community. Not just this, but our proposal to add the redundant storage should be a, a benefit to the community, they're very low risk, I did an internet search. Uh, knowing I was coming in here tonight, um, for failed ponds in New York State, failed stormwater facilities in New York State. Breached ponds in New York State, I did a whole bunch of different searches, why not how many I found? Give you a guess, zero. There's none in the country, except Illinois, Illinois had one, and that's because. I mean, I didn't even read the whole article, I just found one, that was in Illinois, which doesn't even use the same criteria or degrees, ours is a lot more strict. So they're pretty terrible. So that's all I got, unless you.
You know how we always say the issue with the water going down the whole thing, and like you said, it's been there. Well, this, um, hasn't been, I would have. Stopping or slowing that down, or is that not related at all? Not sure, I just saw the first time I've seen it.
Okay. We don't, we don't agree to hold it like. Our, 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 our water will be drained the whole way, and the name is over here, which is uphill from off.
Right.
We drain down here. This, this property right here is all uphill of this. So they send us water. Thank you.
Can bring up Joe, um, talk a little bit about up and fill. And, uh, despite work, because I think when we were here last time, some numbers you're throwing around about what's coming off from offsite, onsite. And, and I thought it would just be helpful for you to understand, we think this plan will be from the cut bill, site was suspended.
I am Joe Moller with J K Tobin Construction, has, uh, we've done many subdivisions in the village in Town of Anlius, uh, Bay of Bill. All over Anadag County, uh, we are developers as well in the northern part of the county. Uh, Jack Tobin has developed a lot of land, um. In Clay, Anadag Hill, and various other parts of the county, and, and Manlis. Um. We try to work, Vince has done a, a job with the grading plan, um, the optimal thing is to not move, is move as little as. There is possible to balance the site. Um, I have not really done a cut fill on per se this drawing, but I know the original rendition, we had twenty-one lots left. It was quite a bit of dirt to move on this project, um, but it was a balanced project. You don't, as developers, want to haul any dirt away, uh, it's expensive, uh, trucking, finding dump sites. Uh, like what we did the, uh, Bayville Town Center, we hauled it over a hundred thousand yards of dirt off of that project. To build those retaining walls and all that, moderate them across the street, uh, to other various projects, um. That's not the optimal, but that's, that's the only way that project would work and fit into the landscape, so. Um, the object is, is obviously move as little dirt as possible. Um, as far as, uh, Rudy's comment on the burn. The, uh, detention area, those all have to be compacted, uh, to ninety-five percent, but I've noticed that, and they'll. Town will be requiring protection tests, so that you don't have any, uh, failure down the way.
I'm not hearing any number, as to how many cubic yards of fill are gonna be moved on this project.
Uh, the original was like thirty-nine or forty thousand yards, something like that, but I've moved that many in other projects. It's all, it's all on site.
That's the, that's the bounds.
Yeah, yeah.
Because what, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, there was not gonna bring a hundred thousand yards out of the site.
No, no, you, no. You couldn't afford it. You couldn't. Yeah, you wouldn't be bringing any of that. Just, the only thing that would be brought on site is, is, uh, building materials, whether it be pressure run. Uh, black, uh, bedding for stone, or the pipe bedding, um. And any of this, this latest materials that you need for these stormwater.
So, roadways and infrastructure is what you do, as part of the individual lots, you leave them as they are?
Well, you follow the grade, yeah, yeah.
But the optimum is the balance, so whatever you cut, you use it as fill.
But I think it was a drawing.
Right, so, and, you know, the, there was a, a hundred thousand cubic yards of material. Being either hauled off or brought on the site, I can't call. Yeah, it's a number I wrote. For a while now, and I wanted to spell that, I, all the material that we're using to, to do the development. Is remaining on site, we're not hauling material on-site or offsite, the only material brought on site is gonna start with oil tanks.
See, all the red, all the red, in the original, that was the original rendition for twenty-two lots or whatever it was. Down in the extension area, that's a lot of cut. And all the blue areas were filled, so that would all balance out depending on, plus you're using a less, uh, digging less basements, so. I haven't done the final number of the new rendition, but, um, it all, that all balances.
Okay, I mean, my, my biggest concern before.
Yeah.
Was proper compaction.
Right.
I didn't want to see houses slide off of.
Yeah.
Like they were, so.
I don't think there's a base with, that's, uh, that's more than, uh, four or five, five feet maybe, something like that.
No, all, please, we have very. All of our foundations are on Churchill.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and thank you, something we've done further was brought up early on, was, um, there was a concern about ejector pumps. And I think that when we get twenty houses, it's at seven, we're down to three of them. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Steve Anner. So. I appreciate you giving us time tonight, and it's a longer presentation, but for purpose, and again, what I wanted to do was really get on those four points. To give you guys an idea that we went back to the drawing board, we heard the concerns of this board. We wanted to provide more information to maybe take that little step, to get into more detail, we'll give you guys a plan of where we're going, so we can get some. Feedback from you, so then we can really do more homework and provide even more detailed. I appreciate the fact that you've gone to conventional plan. I really feel, although this board likes cluster development, and we favor cluster development when we can. I felt that, uh, based upon what had happened previously, you destroyed the opportunity to cluster develop. So I appreciate the conventional plan. Uh, we're gonna need a lot more questions and answers relative to the, um, plant, the construction of the pond, we didn't get any of those answers. Last time, as to how it was gonna be constructed, how it looks, good benchmarks in it, uh, all of that, as well as the roadways. We, we didn't get any of the information we needed on the construction and compacting of the roadways last time. So hopefully we get all of that type of information, so we can make a informed decision. What are you looking for as far as stockheads?
Um, most of that is, uh, contained in the documents that we previously submitted. We haven't changed the road design at all, the road hasn't moved or changed with destruction, so that's in the previous documents that were submitted, we'll be glad to. Um, reproduce those, and, uh, because we've added redundant retention basin. That has somewhat changed the compaction and, and maybe the design of that area, so, um, that is part of the new plan. That would be something that we would have to work on, if you.
You're saying your prior submission, which, your prior submission?
Okay, we're, we're, we'll submit and update it, we have, we have to redesign those lots too, I mean, there's lots of issues. Since there's less lot, now all the house positions and everything else have changed, so we have to redesign them so that Doug can do his job and, and look at the plan, so.
What's that?
Uh, that's up to, Captain Freeman, they're gonna be doing the grading, so. There it is, there it is. Yeah, something like that, and hang together and complete submission, you get a holiday in there, give everything, I guess.
Are you looking for January ninth, or are you looking for January twenty-third?
Ninth.
Ninth.
You can get it to us enough time beforehand, so we can redo it?
Yes, sir.
January.
Very, very much.
We'd get in by the twenty-third for the month.
Let's go.
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third for the month, yes. Vince, are you talking?
Yeah, January twenty-third.
January right there.
That's what I want, January, right, January is, we're gonna, so, oh, January twenty-third.
January twenty-third. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all the next tape, Tom and Gary. The next item on our agenda is an application by Ron Diamond. This is his initial presentation for a two lot subdivision in forty-nine eleven Palmer Road. Uh, two tax prep numbers, one sixteen dash, one dash twenty-two point four, one sixteen dash, one dash twenty-two point three. Sir, could you tell us who you are?
I'm Ron Diamond. Worked in this hearing since nineteen seventy-two up in Decatur, my son is taking Diamond's second floor. And is running it, uh. And we're very, very fortunate, uh, two of our four kids willing to pay the taxes and stay in this area and have a little boat. Uh, so we wanted, uh, we purchased the home next door, uh, in your, in, boom, boom. And the eight, the thirty-some acre. We flipped that house and sold it in an hour, and kept the land. For my wife and her swamp that she's always wanted, uh, and I can hunt there anytime I want, and. So we added the property to our house, uh, in the barn that you can see. Um. You can see in the, uh, south, these corner up here. Uh, we were not able to get a driveway cut because we wanted, because we did not have six hundred and ten. Feet because of the drop in the hill, here. So, uh, we're gonna put a driveway in. Uh, a road into this lot, and, um. Our plan is to, uh, build a smaller guest house on that. That piece of property right there, retain both. Both properties.
Yeah, just because I've not seen what you're pointing to, you're planning on building a house on it, we may be, uh.
Yeah, I, we made that.
Two point five acre?
That's almost square area of about one thousand, twelve hundred. Eight hundred square feet, and.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, uh, we've done some preliminary stuff and then.
Uh we've done some preliminary stuff and the bird and subject and everything seems to be. Or asked so.
I'm gonna open it up to the board to ask you any questions.
All right.
The bad news is we have to schedule a public hearing. Apparently, we have no questions of you. You presented very well in your paperwork and on your drives. January night. So we're scheduling this for a public hearing on January night. The public's entitled to come and tell us their feelings about the subdivision. Some people may come or they may not come. Uh but we're required to schedule a public hearing.
Well, we got a Christmas party Saturdays. We'll front that off.
So that's okay, Mr. Diamond. We're gonna see you on January night.
Okay, and we've got. Got in touch with uh both of these questions, both of those, and. I don't think there's anything as far as, so did you say this? I think the only thing Ron, the reason I talked about was uh Palmer Road is a lay road. Yeah, sort of kind of make home bad. Probably roll out use. So that's hopefully that what you're telling her that twenty-five feet off the road is gonna be okay. That like counting a lot of snow and. Yeah, yeah. More concerned about the snow which off the road, yeah, down to the driveway. So.
And actually, I didn't do that right. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing.
A motion to schedule. Second or fourth, was it the seventh?
January. I'll second it.
Second by duty, all in favor?
Hi.
We will now see you January night.
Can't wait.
Um the last two items on the agenda, we we did ask if they'd be welcome put on at the same time because they're pertaining to the same property. This is an application by Danielle and Ryan Edwards. A property located at eighty-two ninety-one East Senate Current Drive. It's the initial presentation on both of these, recite plant and special use permit. Two different businesses, one is going to be closets, wanting to pay later. And the seventh one is going to be Ryan's Landscaping. Mister Chairman, I need to. He found his exit.
Excuse me, there's Joe Mastriani in the interior for the project. I apologize. So as the chairman said, this is the two projects we're tying into one. This is on um. Their property here, existing house right here. And then there are buildings that are here for the landscape, the company. And then the first part I want to talk about is the clothes. Doggy daycare. So as I was saying, the residential houses here. Existing pole barns over here, the first part I'm gonna talk about is. The proposed doggy daycare closets. So. Uh this is gonna be a roughly fifty by fifty foot steel building. And further down this plan, we do have. Elevation rooms, just basic rectangle building. Um we're gonna have a new, we're proposing a new driveway coming out. Um to the highway there, the state highway. And it's gonna be as tight as possible to the property line, so nothing much is impacted over here. We've got inside the building. It's gonna be just like the dog can be dropped off uh from like seven in the morning until six at night. There you go. And inside the building. But at the front. We're gonna have a large play area, an office. Obviously, reception area, restroom, utility room. Or on the side, they're gonna have eight suites where doggies go and. You know, sleep or whatever, it would have room to do that. These suites are gonna have floors that will go outside. It will be a small fenced-in area on the outside of that. But. That will be. On the backside of the building. Don't expect noise anywhere, but they'll be on the backside, so nothing's gonna be down towards the major or anything else. The total on this project is just about thirty thousand square feet. All right, so I mean, it's not up to nature, so you know, your stormwater, however, I talked to Doug. What I'm gonna put together for him is a drainage report. Outlining what the different events would produce from this, where it's gonna go. Uh it it there's no way it's gonna go up on the road. I mean, first. Right now, everything goes down this way. Process where the drive is and look back here and goes out. So we're gonna just maintain the same thing in it, so. Yeah, right now, the drainage goes this way. Goes like over by the drive and it comes back out through the backside here. And so we're not gonna change that drainage pattern or anything else. So like I said, the roadway. Is a good, at least two feet higher, so there's nothing that's gonna go up to the road. And it is less than one acre, so. Uh there will be a couple of lights on the outside of the building. I've got a photos relation being done currently. Uh I don't have it with me, but that's gonna be going currently. And we have the necessary parking around there. There will be about uh on average, two people working at the facility at a point.
What hours, how many days in the week?
It's gonna be Monday through Friday. It's gonna be uh.
Seven, seven AM. Seven AM.
Eleven AM, six.
No overnight running there.
All right.
No overnight running.
No. Come up on the way home if you work. You know, it tells that unlimited hours, it's only. The work day. The work day, it's not the weekend. So that's the first portion.
How many dogs are you planning on having at one time?
I think in twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five. They're gonna be small, small, pretty dogs.
It's small, like, yeah.
Uh utilities for the site. We've got water on our side of the street. We're gonna have buried water, electric and gas coming up to the facility. Sanitary. We're gonna do a raised bed up behind the building. Uh because there's no place we can put it. There's more than enough area to do it. And that's gonna be designed based on the estate E C requirements for. Um commercial facility things like that. Any questions on this part of the project, love the dog daycare?
It's the cross street in. Let's see, what center is cross street?
You've got Andrew Grove, just not too far back.
We're between high and end.
And I have, I have a threshold. So dog, the a dog channel is allowed with the special news permit in the R A zone. As a primary use. It would be my opinion that you can't have it on the same lot, but you're gonna have to do a subdivision. You can't have it on the same lot, so the question is. Doug, you're you're agreeing with me on that, so um. There needs to be. A line drawn to create a new lot. And we need to make sure that the setbacks and the bulk regulations work. I think they will, I mean. I'm no engineer, but this kind of based.
Good part of.
There's a lot of road frontage, there should, there should be enough acreage, the um. The requirement is minimum hundred fifty feet frontage. Um. Let me see. No, two hundred of frontage and a hundred thousand square feet of area where a septic system is proposed. Do we have that much?
Well, the subject is gonna be. Well, yes, you've got that much back there, yeah.
Yeah.
Say that again, Doug?
Existing part of the overall service that's really tried.
Well. Just the dog daycare, if they have three hundred.
Existing lot, it's three hundred and eighty-five feet.
We've got a hundred eighty-five. The whole lot is thirty-five.
But the other facility also has. They're being two hundred and two hundred, right?
Well, because um. Uh I think. I think for for a house, it's different. It so. Hundred and fifty. Forty thousand for the house.
That with sewer.
That is with um public.
Public sanitary sewers are provided a hundred fifty feet.
Oh, yeah.
Forty thousand.
And then.
Two hundred for what I said.
Right.
And a hundred thousand square feet.
Okay, so. It's all over the range, but. So what is the setback? Instead of that, right, it's not, it's not public. There's no public water.
Your public water. There is some sewer.
Well, here's, so your road frontage, so you need two hundred.
When you're talking.
You need four hundred, you need separate lots.
Right, and you're talking about the um. Septic in relation to the house, because this here.
No.
So so the thing there is just a storage. Where he parks his trucks and the leaves.
So is the house on public? Or private?
Your house on the subject.
Well, we have a subject tag.
Okay, so they each need two hundred of frontage. And we only have thirty-five total.
So it's a change.
Sure, so you need a variance. So we have, there's need to be over there in this. So that's just something to keep in mind as we're as we're talking about that, okay?
Yep.
So there would need to be a subdivision now. Okay, so this is just.
No, no. No. Okay, so like I said, the dog daycare, any questions in regards to that before I move over to the other?
Yeah, let's. We have a landscape, we have water.
Yes.
It says not sure if we can tap into the phone. For for me to underline.
No, I'm showing, I'm showing second line. I don't, Aqua's not gonna let you go and. But closer. Okay, so the other side of the coin. He's over here. Uh what Ryan does, he's a landscaper and. He parks his trucks and equipment at his pole barn, he's there. And picks up my more, the guys show up, they work with him, they go out, they come back, they would, so it's not like there's an office there. No customers coming there. Uh there's nothing along those lines, mainly where the storage place for the business.
And how many trucks? Four. Four, four trucks? What other type of equipment do you have out there? One's uh one excavator, one's.
Okay. Can I and talk about a couple of things?
Yeah.
This is for the board. I'm sorry, we have some people, well, just failures and missing, so um. So the question is whether this business is a home occupation, a rural occupation, or an and or an accessory use. So there's some definitions. Um rural occupation is is to allow a certain passive applications which do not fit within this chapter's definition of home occupation. Which traditionally um has traditionally been primarily professionally teaching uses. It's intended to permit and regulate small, low-intensity business occupations that blend natural with the rural setting is determined by. Um the this board during the special permit process. It can be controlled to be in conformity with neighbor uses to minimize possible detrimental effects on. These uh neighboring properties. That would require an accessory use permit. A home occupation. Um occupation or profession was carried on in a dwelling unit or a building or other structuring. Accessories to a dwelling unit and is carried out solely by a member of the family residing in the dwelling unit. And is clearly incidental and accessory or secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes. Um in examples, home crafts, art student, dressmaking, teaching. Um professional office dentist, physician, lawyer, engineer, architect, accountant, estate broker, insurance salesman. For my patient. Um so. That's what I think we're talking for, okay, yeah. We have any questions, Joe? How we doing here?
Doesn't sound like it's online patient. Nothing's gonna be done at the hall. They have to all the work to be done away from the hall. Um the home is simply being used as a uh parking area where the vehicles can store it for their own, like.
Yeah. So. Um no customers coming to the site. So the question is, what is it? Does it fit into any of these? And what kind of permit would be necessary? Because it's really not a landscaping business.
There's little signage, we're going to say it's.
Rural occupation, home occupation, accessory use.
Let's see, accessory.
It's just a building or use clearly incidental or subordinate to used connection with the dwelling. They answered that and located on the same lot there and it's not in connection with the dwelling, it's a separate. So it's it's either a home occupation or it's a rural occupation.
Seems to be a.
Which is rural, say again.
Rural. Um intended to permit and regulate regulate small, low-intensity business occupations that blend natural. Will lead with the rural setting is determined by this board during the special permit process. To be controlled to be in conformity with neighboring uses, minimize possible detrimental effects of the used unneighboring properties. So the question is, is this, is this allowed? With the house there.
Yeah.
Right, if the the house wasn't there, that would be different.
Right.
So also. Do they need it?
And they they need an accessory use permit. And it would be regulated by the sport to be compatible if that's what the plan is.
Jim, just remind, could you do accessory use again?
Yeah. A a building or use clearly incidental or subordinate to a new connection with the dwelling. They're located in the same lot, so.
I hate to do this, but uh my thought of this is. We need a public hearing. We did a public hearing, we had another application over at Kirkville. And that one, we requested a public hearing. Uh the reason I say I hate to do this is because we had a public hearing. At the last time when we were determining whether or not to make a recommendation. To the town board for zoning change, we had a public hearing. And I kind of remember what everybody said. Relative to the zone change. But but I think we need that.
Well, I think we have to.
Yeah, and that, and that's fine, but one quick question from me, the, um. What was the last one, you wrote the accessory?
Yes.
Yeah. If, not just, you know. He has a space in the house that he uses as his office area. Would that then be connected with the house, is that following that legally or?
Well, I, I don't know what, you know, what's going to fall under home occupation, I think it needs to be discussed, um, or whatever. You know, because we, I mean, also have people who come in and they're like, I have this house and now I want to store a bunch of stuff, like, how do you? How do you deliver it?
Yeah.
Where do you?
To facilitate this use.
Right.
What about the school?
That, that would be, I, I believe that that is going to fall under a home occupation, the required accessory use permit as well.
Be the daycare.
Home, a home daycare, I mean, it's not a daycare center.
Right, right.
I don't think that's what's at all in terms of. But it's, but it's a home occupation, I think that's pretty clearly a home occupation.
Our next available date, it's going to be January the ninth, I just may ask, we can have it put on for January the ninth, public hearing. I think that I can hear from the public, and then we've got some talking to do amongst the board as to where, where that would fit in and it fits in. And how, how it fits in.
So, just so I understand, would the, uh, public hearing be? We discuss. Which? Use it would be, which would be appropriate, or would it be to review the entire project?
We would schedule a public hearing at both the aspects of it.
Okay.
And, and, um, handedly. I think would be done together, it would be.
Well, that's why I wanted, but I just didn't know what the board was.
Yeah, that, that would be the most appropriate.
The other thing I can help you, the other thing I, one, as I said today was. For sure, you're going to need a variance. Because your house is going to be, the house person is going to become non-conforming. If the dog daycare is in port. Or, versus visa. And look at your sites, set backs and so forth, but I mean, I think it's fine, Doug, but. You're a better eyeballer than I am about. You know, there's a line. You know, do you make one conforming and one non-conforming, do you split the baby, you know, go to the CBA and. Figure it out, I mean, it's, it's a pretty minor variance.
Yeah.
I mean.
Maybe about seven and a half.
We're not the CBA, but it's, it seems like a pretty minor variance.
Yeah.
But we can also discuss the fact that it will slightly need a subdivision and then we would need to have, we're there for all three, well. I think I'm going to, um, withdraw my suggestion on January ninth. And leave that open, um, for the subdivision implied for, and, um.
I'll make it part of the same.
Make, make it all part of the same public hearing.
Okay, so, so there, will we go on there or not?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's, it's too early, uh, and, yeah, no, it's, it's too early. Let's get the subdivision filed, incorporate that as part of the public hearing, so we do the public hearing of the subdivision. And, uh, especially use permit, so that, both of the occupations.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Um. Both of them. So that's waiting on the daycare, and I don't think that we send any of the daycare.
No.
An accessory use permit.
So really, the, uh, public hearing. Is going to effectively have three portions, like. Subdivision.
We would consider all three, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, subdivision, special permit to accessory use permits. And then, if you can get in. The application for, with variance, maybe. Send a proposal. Again, I'm not the engineer, I don't know where I wanted to go, but I'm telling you, one of them is going to be short.
Right, right.
Be sure.
Right, so should we go for the variance first with the ZA?
Keep it, we'll there.
Right, okay.
And when we hear back from you and we go get all of our ducks and water, we'll schedule that public.
James, one more time. Most of the three things.
Special permit on the doggy daycare. Accessory use permit, maybe if it's determined that. Um, that use is allowed as a home occupation. Um, or, or a rural occupation. Um, on this lot.
Who's going to determine that?
It's going to be a legal determination, ultimately, the code will, I'll talk to the code officer about it.
Okay.
And then the, um. The daycare is a, is a home occupation accessory use.
Jamie, I'm just to subdivide.
And the subdivision.
And maybe Chuck going to have. Seems to me like the landscaping of the daycare has been in business. For quite some time now.
Yes.
And now with the doggy daycare, I sort of get the impression that the. People are dropping their kids off for daycare. Can you take care of our dogs too?
No, I, no, that, oh, kidding, I mean, I, I have that because it's like.
Yeah.
I mean, if someone has a, a regular kid, they want to bring their dog.
No, right, I was just curious.
What we need to be able to like for the home, the home daycare, this accessory use permit, because it's a home occupation. So we're trying to clean it up.
So I need, I need, I need somebody for my daycare.
An accessory use.
Should it be every home daycare use of, because there are several all over Manlius.
Love to, love to have them come in.
Well, I'm saying, I don't need them when I come in, we, we have to go there to be regulated on the same.
Yeah, I, I understand. It's just, it's a home occupation under a code. If you tell me who they are, we'll tell town board just.
Got a list.
I'm trying to blow people in, we're just trying to do things the right way.
No, we appreciate it, and, and, and the, the thing about the. That your doggy daycare has to be separate.
Yes.
That, you know, so it's a separate lot. And you should be fine.
Yeah.
We normally don't entertain questions, but since you got your end up.
Because this proposed doggy daycare is proposed to be directly behind our. Directly. And not that much. Footage. Between us. And the parking lot. And you are proposing to put a septic system back there, I don't know what a raised bed was. And so we are on our well. Uh, because we, we just aren't, we have done for many, many years. And so are the properties next. So I want to understand exactly what you were talking about with regard to footage.
There has to be two hundred, um, feet of road frontage.
From a road.
Of road, road frontage.
Okay, and ours is directly in front of this property and theirs is over.
Well, they'll have the frontage.
Okay.
That, I mean, if they divide it up. Divide it, they'll have enough road frontage. And then the question is, and do they have enough square, square footage, which they do. And then the question for this board is, is that the right place for the, for the doggy daycare? It might not be.
We're going to notice the public hearing, that's when you want to come and talk.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
And, and ask for me to visit to our house, and I showed you where it was. I walked you up to it, so.
So if you guys want to come up with anything.
We'd love to have anybody, we can. We can show anybody.
Can you, can you put the doggy daycare there?
We could put a bathroom, but then you're getting in somewhere, you're taking down trees unnecessarily because there's already an open area, so they're going to be cutting down trees and stuff that. You don't need to be cutting down, and then it makes it more, where you have that more driveway or. Lineage for the plants to go for water and stuff, so we, it's. An adequate space, we have an eight foot fence, so they're blocking, so there's no, you cannot see anything between the elements out, and we're proposing to do it. These are pictures of the fence.
Okay, we're going to, we'll have a public hearing scheduled. When we're ready for it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Is your property, do you know what it's zoned?
Our property is.
Yeah, they're, they switch from our one. I remember that, I just didn't know what.
All right. We're, I've set it all very gentle, but we got two quick announcements. Our next scheduled meeting is on December the twelfth. Do not come here, go to East Syracuse, Manoa High School. Same time, six thirty at night, this is scheduled for public hearing at the rural X property that's out at Mangon Farms at Fools Brook. And we're anticipating. I'm anticipating over a hundred people coming to the chat.
What's the date?
December the twelfth. So ESN High School Auditorium, December the twelfth. We'll see what happens. The last time was in the innovation, we had over a hundred people coming to talk to us, the last roll, Friday, it was on, they, we may very well have more this, this time around. Uh, the last thing on our agenda is tonight is Ed Deables' last night. She's, he had retired his house supervisor and came and joined us.
Okay, Ed's taking us out for a drink, let's.
So we want to thank Ed for your dedicated service with the. Uh, and we wish you well and. What's probably not going to be your retirement. It's been a bunch of work, yeah.
Well, thank you, you know, it's not going to reach earlier, and then I. Really, a learning experience being from this one. Then the other end where I had that for a couple of years, so. Uh, worth a lot, thank you very much for all your guys for your help. Putting in a great, not a nice boy, so that now for, I don't know how many years. At least, I feel close to twenty, yeah.
You've been a great asset to the town, Ed.
Great experience.
And I think I'll probably keep writing.
And they're indicating.
I take a motion to adjourn, second. Thank you, my attorney, all in favor.
Bye.
What she carries, standing.